For joining us today for the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees meeting of January 9th. If you could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first we'll start with public comment. If anybody would like to come up, please. Oh, right, that's sorry. So Clerk Brook is out tonight. So due to statute, we do have to appoint another clerk.
I nominate Treasurer Keeps.
Support. Motion by trustee, Showstack support by trustee, oh my gosh, Barnett. It's one of those nights, guys.
It's not Chris Barnett either.
It's not Chris Barnett. All in support?
I'll accept the nomination.
Oh, we weren't going to let you get out of there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for stepping up. All right. So first is public comment. And if anybody would like to come up and join us at the podium, just say your name and address.
And you'll have three minutes and that'll count down. And I'll give you like a 30-second kind of wave and then after three minutes.
That would be awesome. Hi, my name is Laura Renton. I live at 1256 Robson Lane. I am here tonight on behalf of the 128 property owners of the Kentmore Property Owners Association, of which I am president of the association. I would like to just discuss kind of a 30,000-foot view of the water sewer rate issue. This really first came to my attention in October when I received this letter from NOAA. First-class mail, three short paragraphs. Love it. I somehow just kind of got left out of the loop. We were deleted from the township, you know, association files for some reason that's since been, you know, corrected. Usually I'm pretty on top of all this stuff, but kind of coming from this from the back end. Started hearing from a bunch of my neighbors and I said, "All right, well, let me just look into this." Talked to NOAA about it in person. A week later, spent a good part of my December catching up on some really exciting meetings, which I watched in order, everything I could find that pertained to the issue. So again, I'm a little behind, but what I really would like to address tonight is the trust and the integrity that we have placed in you in terms of communicating with people who made an agreement with you. And the agreement, of course, was all of this. And all of the homeowners who installed second water meters had to agree to this, had to follow all these steps, had to pay these fees, had to do everything you ask, and we all did that. So when I talk to people in our association about things that they need to do, I stay within the parameters of our bylaws, of our deed restrictions. That's our sweet spot. That's what we can do and we don't go out of that arena. What it seems to me, and to most of my neighbors, is that you've sort of violated this agreement in terms of, "We did what was asked and now the rules are changing," without being offered the opportunity to discuss them with you directly. So what I would like to offer tonight is perhaps a reassessment of the situation. I would like you to look at it from the point that this was done. NOAA has left some openings in this letter. I mean, it really says, you know, you're sort of thinking about it. You're considering, "If it's approved, we're delaying the implementation."
Your time is up.
Okay.
But finish your...
Can I finish up my thought? So my thought is, and I really respect what you do, and it kind of meshes what I do on a really, you know, micro level with the association. We move up the chain of command, but if we don't have that mutual level of, "We're going to hold to the terms of what we asked and what we promised," as I do in our association, then what are we doing? Where is this going? Where could it go? So that's all I wanted to put forth to you tonight before you consider your budget.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment?
Hi. George Soroka, 1466 Manor Ford. And I've been in the township for a little over 35 years. And thanks for the opportunity to do this. I would also like to address the October 13th memo discussing the proposed increases for secondary meters. And I have basically two points. And the one point is that there was a statement made in the presentation or by some of the consultants that, "Well, the primary meters have subsidized secondary meters over 20 years." And I believe that this is somewhat inaccurate and misleading for a couple of reasons. One reason is because the secondary meters are used mostly at nighttime for irrigation purposes, and that's something that can be controlled. And also, when you look at the amount of water that we've purchased, the township has purchased over the past 20 years, it's dropped over 17%. Actually, it looks like it's probably a lot more than that from the graph, but at least that's 17%. So I believe that some of those issues with the demand are already baked into the piping and into the valves, the motors, and so on. It's already pretty much there, covered with the rate increases that you've already implemented for the primary meters. So the second point that I have is more of a personal nature, which is, when you looked at the presentation, the presentation made it look like, "Well, the only choice was, are we going to, you're going to utilize a secondary meter or not?" And whether there was justification for that. But really, our decision was a lot more complex than that, and I think that's true for most of the people because we had an existing well water that we could have used as a viable source for irrigation. So when we did what the township asked us to do and look at what the cost would be, we compared that with keeping the existing well, and that's when we decided, "Well, it was a yes or it was no." For most people, it was a yes. So I think it was a little misleading by the consultants, a little lazy maybe, not to get into that whole thing, but I do think that that was something. And right now, that's not something that we can go back and change readily. So it's gonna, if we implement these changes, basically it's going to invalidate our economics.
Go ahead.
Okay. It's going to basically invalidate the economic evaluation that we made when we made at that point in time. So we're just asking the township to hold off on this, maybe for future secondary meters that they should be probably incorporated because they'll have an impact on that, but for the existing ones, it doesn't feel fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come up and speak?
I do. Other water and sewer speakers. You go first. Charlie? Civil review.
Thank you for the time today. My name is Dolores Nunez Studier, and I live at 1285 Lennox. I haven't been here 30 years. I've been here only about 14, 15. Love the township. But I must tell you that I am very disturbed by what is going on. There are three points I want to make. The first one is that the process that took place, I think, was flawed. For the people that were directly impacted by this, not to have been directly approached before that workshop took place and asked them to come forth and participate, I think was wrong. I think that was completely wrong. Just like that letter was sent to us, everyone knew who we were. We had a permit. We have a meter. They knew who we were. Why would they not have come to us and said, "We'd love for your participation at this workshop," if we had consultants already telling us that typically these fees are assessed? Okay? So I think that's number one. And of course, when someone's opinion is not present in the room, what a surprise that they might very well be the target. So that's number one. I think the process was flawed. Okay? Number two, the consultant, by what I heard, many misunderstandings, and I don't know where that came from. I'm not going to fault anybody, right? But things like, "We paid for our meters. The township didn't. We paid for installation, okay, of those meters." If they were to fail, why does the township feel that they would need to pay for it? I would think that if it failed, and I paid for it, I have to replace it. Now, if it's a technol... First of all, 15 years. My husband and I have owned homes. They generally don't fail in 15 years, but sometimes technology requires you to replace them. And if that's the case, you go to the people that own it, us, and you say, "We need to change it." One-time cost, you change it out. Okay? So why did they think that the township is going to have to pay for that? The other thing is to say that we're the biggest draw, that there's personal irrigation and fire flow. Okay, personal, I'm not sure, since we have primary meters, I would think that's the personal. Okay? Yes, they are used for irrigation. Everyone I know uses it for irrigation. Fire flow? When I think of that, I think fire suppression. Okay? That seems commercial to me. That's a whole different category of resident or company. Go address them, right? And if it's this huge house that has a suppression system?
30 seconds.
Yeah. Then, God, hopefully there haven't been that many fires in those big homes. I will tell you that once you go down what I call the slippery slope, we made an agreement. This is what we agreed to do. Okay? And now this is being tapped into, and we already know water is a contentious issue in the city, right here in the township. I'll tell you, we also made the decision to go from a well to pay money and a lot of money. I have 18 zones. I pay a lot of money. Thank you. I pay a lot of money, and I'm telling you now, I'm thinking, "I'd rather invest in sinking a new well and not have to pay any of that amount of money." And that's a lot of money. I've heard that $500,000 a year is paid on second meters. What if there are others like me that say, "I'd rather invest money in a well and not pay you." Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else?
I'm Dave Leonard. I live at 1190 Lennox. I've been there almost 50 years. And I invested in putting in a second meter, paid for the meter, paid for the piping, paid for whatever else you asked me to pay for, signed all your agreements, and took care of it. Spent a lot of money watering, making my property look nice. And if I have to start paying more money, I guess I have to look at other alternatives, either just stop watering or sink a well. But I just, you know, I believe what you told me when I signed up for the second meter. Of course, back then, I had a pond. I went from a pond to a waterfall. I also want to keep the grass green and everything else, but it's getting to a point where I might want to eat better or drink better, but so I would like to see this revisited and have time to talk on it. Thank you.
I'm going to save some time and identify myself as I walk off.
Actually, can you do that there because it's all recorded? Thank you, though. We love to hear from you.
Craig Fitzgerald, 1296 Lennox. I'm going to come at this from a very different perspective. I went back and looked at the financials of the Water and Sewer Department for the last five years, and here is what I saw. I'm only going to focus on like five or six numbers. One is revenues increased $5.5 million during that period from 2018 through 2022, right off your financials, 5.1% a year. Operating and administrative expenses, your costs that you actually control, they went down 4.3% each year from $5.2 million to $4.3 million. Good job controlling your costs. Operating profit went up from $2.5 million to $7.3 million, a compounded rate of 31%. So profit went up 31% every year for that four-year period. Fourth, marketable securities. So profit went way up. Revenues went up. Costs that you guys control went down. Costs that you bought went up, which you sort of don't control. Profits went way up. Marketable securities went from $7.8 million to $20 million. All that profit you earned was turned into marketable securities. That was at a 26% growth rate. Net capital assets, that's the net investment you have in all this infrastructure in the township, was flat for that five-year period. And I just picked five years because that's sort of a customary analysis period. I didn't go back 20 years and figure out, "What period can I find that sort of points me to where I think we ought to be?" And then effectively, the equity went from $53 million to $74 million. So here is my takeaway. I think instead of increases, I'm surprised a consultant didn't suggest you ought to be, if he looked at the financials, I don't know why they weren't talking about reductions. Look at how much equity you increased. Look, what did you do? You converted it into marketable securities investments? So here's what I'm going to do personally. So I think there's a lot of questions on why we're even not talking about decreases as opposed to increases. I'm going to look at a well. I'm going to look at downsizing my water meter, and I'm told 50 times a year that I've got the nicest lawn in the neighborhood that will no longer be. I will reduce frequency and amount of watering. So I will react. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come up? We'll go ahead and close the public comment. And just to remind everyone, this is why we wanted to send those letters. Although we put it on social media, we send out newsletters to homes. Not everybody gets a chance to read everything. So we were hoping that sometimes the public, sorry, the post office doesn't always deliver everything, but we were able to get a lot of these actually delivered well, and that's why we sent this, because all of the participation that we had was from the, which makes sense because there's 12,000 of the people that don't have secondary and there's 3,000 that do. So it makes sense. But it seemed lopsided, which is why the board as a whole said, "We're not comfortable and we need time to look into possible grandfathering, possible other issues." So that's why there was a conscious effort to actually reach out. So I do want to make sure that people know that nobody was targeted. And there were some words that were a little surprising on that one because you were targeted for this. You were targeted to be a part of this discussion. And just to remind you, we are not talking water rates that are affected by that until February, March. And again, you will get notices to know when those meetings are, but the rates that we talk about water rates and meters is not what's on for tonight, but those discussions haven't started up again. But you will be contacted, and this is what we want. We want more input because I know quite a few of us were frustrated that we went through this long nine-month process expecting input and we weren't getting a lot. So this is, you know, I've gotten, it's nice to see faces because I've emailed, I think, every single one of you, and I wanted to tell you, "Please come in and give this information." But everybody up here, some are water users, are second meters, some aren't, but this is why we sent those letters, was to engage the public. And they will start up again. And I don't know if maybe you can share when you come up here, the exact dates if you know, but if not, we would also be sending out some information of when those water rate discussions will start up again. So normally, we don't address public comments, but I just want to put some relaxation into there to let people know we have not opened those discussions yet, but we have been looking behind the scenes of, "How can we work with people who are already on this program versus moving forward?" Where we would still replace things. So I just want to make sure you all know that there was a conscious effort for this board to move forward on this one.
Thanks, Danny, and thanks for, you know, bringing all that up. But the other part too, and I think you've said it, but I want to make it very clear, the board has not made a final decision on this. We are going to revisit this, which was stated a year ago, and so there has been no final decision whatsoever. There was discussion on it a year ago, which is healthy. I'm glad everybody's here and we're getting more... Somebody's shaking their head. No, we have not made a final decision on this. And we're open to listening to everybody, and I know many members on the board are not comfortable with stating that there's been a final decision because there hasn't been. And so we'll revisit it as we said we would, as you said we would.
Hopefully that, sorry, public comment was, that's why we opened up public comments, sorry. But you will get notices again on those coming in February and March. So we'll go ahead and move on to our board minutes of December 12th. We've all had a chance to look those over unless there's any changes. I would look for a motion.
So moved.
Support by trustee Barnett. Support by, was it trustee Showstack? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
Next, we have approving the board's study session minutes of December 15th. If I had a chance to look those over, unless we have any changes, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Showstack. Support by trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. So next, we have the preliminary approval for the 2324 Capital Improvement Project, and we have Noah Mahowski here.
No, I think we have number four.
Oh, sorry. I jumped ahead. The DTE poll adjustment. Sorry, the Poll Relocation Agreement for Porter's Lane. It's the NOAA show. I jumped to the wrong NOAA spot.
This is on behalf of Engineering and Environmental Services too, so.
Do you want to introduce Paul?
Yeah, that's why I brought Paul in. He's the new superintendent of Public Works in Bloomfield Township, so, or DPW. I wanted to bring him in here. He started in October, mid-October.
17.
Yep. So he retired actually from Redford Township after a full tenure there. So we're lucky to have that experience here, and he's obviously young in age, so he's got a lot of years left. So it's a fortunate position for him to be in, to be able to retire and then work for Bloomfield Township. But I wanted to introduce him to you as the board as a whole. I was going to maybe have another agenda item that would have been a DPW-related one. I could have got him involved, but I still saw the benefit of bringing him up, kind of named a face for you guys, and, you know, you'll be seeing him around quite a bit, so.
Do you want to give a brief background? Because I know, especially being retired at a young age, he has a lot of experience. He basically like was born into his position, but do you want to give a little background?
Yeah, I worked at Redford since I was 18-years-old. Started out at Parks and Recs, moved my way up to, I worked for, we had a sanitation department for a little bit, at the tail end of a sanitation department. So, you know, I would drive garbage trucks, pick up special waste or solid waste, special pickups. Then from there, I moved to the water department pretty quickly. And then I was probably 20-years-old at the water department, started there, 19, 20. And then from there, I moved up to Foreman in '09. And then in 2020, I became the superintendent over there. And then I retired this year, or last year, '22. And then luckily, Bloomfield Township had an opening. It just happened to be, and I love it here. You know, I looked at your guys' website. I love the way this ran. I've heard a lot of things throughout my years in Redford about Bloomfield Township. I even came here for a few classes that they've had APWA or AWWA classes here. I've always remembered their campus is very clean, pristine, and just the way the township ran, I love it. And I'm very happy to be here and a part of the community and the team as well. And my door is always open for anybody. If you have any questions, I'm here. So it's very nice to meet all you guys, and I'll be seeing you around for the next 20-plus years.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
And one of the areas in particular that is one of our strengths is the water department. And it's really the first time in DPW, I was really the first one who had some sort of water background, but this is really a strength within the water that DPW has not had in the past. So it's a step in the right direction for us. There's a lot riding on the water department, and, you know, regulations are not going away. So, thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
All right. So again, this is cleaning up the Porter's Lane project. It's the, one of our sewer projects that's ongoing right now. It's nearing completion. There were several electrical poles that had to be moved to facilitate the project going forward, and those poles were moved into temporary easements. The adjacent property owners weren't interested in granting easements permanently, so those poles have to be moved back out of that temporary construction easement and back into what their final location will be. So this agreement is for that work to occur by DTE, and that will be the final part of that project. I just, we got the pay estimate for the construction side of the project, so this literally will be it. Restoration is complete out there, and so this is the final thing for this project. Looking for a recommendation to approve this and so I can sign the agreement, so.
Anyone have questions for NOAA? If not, I'd look for a motion. Motion to approve the Poll Relocation Agreement. Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That does pass.
Question, do we need to also authorize you to prepare a check or is that all included?
When I sign this contract, that's basically included in it. Then I'll do a PO request, which will kind of button everything up. But in this case, it's, there's no other, you know, DT is the only player in the game, so.
This kind of puts it into that PO checks and balance section.
Okay.
Next, we have considered preliminary approval for the 2324 Capital Improvement Project.
So germane to some of the conversation tonight, what I'm, this is kind of an abnormal year, and it's an abnormal year due to volume and the amount of projects that we got and the dollar amount associated with those capital improvement projects. And these are the same projects that Olivia and I presented on during the ARPA hearing that are now coming due for our next fiscal year. And so what has occurred is that we need to start on the engineering of this because we've been warned by our engineer. Our typical process is to wait until April 1st, when the water rates are approved. They have warned us that if we wait until April 1st, they will not be able to design and get these projects constructed within the next fiscal year. Right? So what we're looking to do is get authorization to begin that design and construction work early, right now basically, and start incurring costs on that. Let me do a little bit of an overview of the system and what we're talking about to give you a sense of place here. But very much think of Porter's Lane and unfortunately Long Lake Road, but the projects that I'm talking about are not on the volume of roadway as Long Lake Road. So 225 miles of sanitary sewer, varying in age. You'll remember the Saw Grant that Engineering got and administered over the last couple of years. That's the reason we found all these issues with our sewers is because the Saw Grant inspected them, and now when you start looking, you find things, right? And so this is some of the stuff that we found. This gives you a sense of place on where they did televise the sewers. They focused on areas that had high inflow potential, think near lakes and ponds and rivers. Back when they constructed these sewers, they typically, you know, they flowed by gravity, so they typically sited them in the low areas, and those areas typically collect water, and then that water makes its way into the sewer. So this gives you a sense of where we televise, which was pretty much all over the township and hotspots that we had delineated. And then there's an overview and there's a map for each one of these. But Forest Lake Country Club, we did a repair back in 2013 there behind the tennis courts. I'll show you the picture. It's basically in a 50-foot green belt between the tennis courts and Forest Lake, and so it's a difficult area to do construction in. And we replaced a part of the pipe just upstream in 2013 of where this pipe is now failing. The failed piece of pipe goes directly under the tennis courts at the Forest Lake Country Club. Similar to Long Lake Road, this is a sewer that was constructed on pilings, and the state of those pilings is in question at this point. So, Club Drive Sewer, Club Drive's going to love us because we get out of Porter's Lane where we closed down Club Drive for a significant period, and we will be closing Club Drive down again next year to address another similar sewer failure within Club Drive. I think it's an offset manhole in this. There's a picture coming. Brafferton Rear Yard Sewer, similar in makeup. We have a failed pipe in that area, and it needs to be addressed. I'll just, I mentioned it in my memo, but I'll call attention to kind of the emphasis for this. So Public Act 222, once we become aware of defects within our sewer, we become liable if there's some sort of backup after we're aware of that. Right? And then it comes down to a question on whether we've acted in a prudent, net nature to fix these or not, right? And that would be a question that a judge would answer, and not me. You know, obviously, the township on our timeline, we believe it's prudent. We want to push these projects to occur next year. But that's kind of the emphasis. Once we become aware of these backups, if there is some sort of adverse impact, a backup into, let's say, 20 or 30 homes along a sewer, we would be liable for that if, if we indeed knew about that defect, right? So as you become aware of these projects, there's some emphasis out there to make the projects happen, right? And so that question of prudence of it, it comes down to budgets, right? How much we've got in reserves. So it's kind of a nebulous question on whether we can, you know, do all these things in one year or not. But this is why these became an emergency kind of issue. Because now we're aware, we need to make moves, or at least begin the process of correcting these things. So here's the estimate, which I go over kind of in depth on the memo, and I kind of total that up for you. That's engineering and construction, right? All I'm authorized, getting authorization at this point to do is to have HRC begin the design work, right? And let's say, for some reason, you know, we sell zero gallons of water this year, right? We've got nothing for income, right? Well, a judge will say, you don't, like, we can't go bankrupt either, right? So if we, for some push or pull reason, decide not to do these projects in the next rate year due to budgets or whatever reason, we'll just want to make sure we're justified, and that we're taking the steps to go forward, right? Again, we can't bankrupt the system. So a judge would, you know, depends on what their opinion would be at that point. But I think you can, you know, we can make a case at that point, so. So here's the Club, or Forest Lake Sewer. You see the tennis courts there with the lines all messed up. Must have just been after winter. You can see the, here's the existing sewer going under the corner of that tennis court. Here's the piece that was replaced in 13. So we would be constructing it over to here, and kind of keeping it out from under the tennis courts, and realigning it along that area. So that kind of gives you a sense of place there. Obviously, we'll be working with, we have easements in there, but we'll be working with Forest Lake to do this at a time of year when it is as least impact upon operations as possible, because it's going to be a mess down there. Club Drive, if you're familiar with where Arshire connects in there, it's right along that intersection. Again, similarly, if you, if you know what's on the other side of the road, it's basically a swamp right here, and wetland. And this is where that, you can see that the man, or the structure has dropped, and it's offset with the pipe there. So very similar to what happened on Porter's Lane for this one, so. Brafferton, this is, again, an offset sewer at the bottom, that is, we're basically monitoring this on an ongoing basis, which is kind of another point, is this is a, this becomes a maintenance issue for, for the DPW. So there's ongoing money kind of expended for these things, because we, again, we have a duty to make sure it doesn't back up. So the only way we can do that is by monitoring the sewer, you know, on a regular basis. So, so kind of my last point will be, you know, again, the more we look, the more we're going to find these things. There is $4.4 million worth of work coming next year. We'll bake that into the rates, and we're starting discussions with the rate, rate consultant right now to bake that capital improvement portion in there. The $12.5 million that Olivia mentioned for the Chapter 20 drains. And then, you know, our O and M side, the stuff that we're doing inside in-house, which is personnel and meter program, right? So it's going to be a aggressive rate year that we're going to have to pay for a lot of these stuff. So I did talk with Jason in accounting, because I, first, I asked Karen and HRC to hold the bills until April 1st, but that's not going to happen. But basically, since we're already going into our reserves, due to the Long Lake Road project and the Porter's Lane, that funding source is available to do this design work ahead of time. So, and Jason, in fact, said even if they waited till after the 1st, we'd backdate everything accounting-wise. So, you know, my concern was that we had the money in the pot to start this and kind of move forward, because just based on what I've seen out of the industry and construction the last couple of years, it's still going to be a tall order to get these constructed. You know, Long Lake Road took us two and a half years, three years to design, and then, and then make happen. So, and these are very large-scale projects. So, not on the three to, knock on wood, not on the three to $4 million that Long Lake is on its own. But between the three or four of them, it's going to be a big endeavor, right? And this has to be considered during the rate setting, so. So basically, just looking for authorization to begin the design work for these projects that are coming. And then we'll discuss, you know, during rate time, whether we do bonding for these projects, or how we fund them, so.
Do we have questions?
Just a comment. Now, thank you for bringing it to the board, because once you, as you mentioned, once you discover it, you have to do something about it. And certainly for the residents, and also to mitigate any liability. So by just starting the engineering process, it's showing due diligence, and that we're taking it seriously. So, and then as far as the, just separate from the budgetary issue of how we're going to pay for it, but at least we have to get started with this part, so. Full agreement with you.
May I ask Brian?
Noah, would you, it's a little bit off topic, but not really, because we're talking about capital dollars and capital going into, into the ground, money going into the ground, basically. And one of the gentlemen during public comments spoke about revenues, expenses, but he really didn't talk about the capital going into. So where does the money come from that you're talking about in terms of these capital projects?
It's all rate-funded. You know, then we choose to, whether we could fund it straight up with rates, and just add it right onto the bottom line. You know, rates in themselves are just a simp, a division problem, right? So if we, we, you know, if you play with the numbers top and bottom, that's when you get more funding for each source, right? So we either bond, which is a less hit on a yearly basis. We take it out of general fund. There's nothing prohibiting an allocation from general fund of $4.4 million for these projects. That's not the way to handle ongoing maintenance. But basically, this comes out of reserves.
But I guess we're dealing with income and expenses, and then we're dealing with assets. And this is really the balance sheet side of the equation. So in order to be able to get the money that, that you're talking about, there has to be some kind of surplus going into the budget, to be able to have money to be able to invest into these capital projects. I, I'm not sure exactly where the gentleman's numbers were coming from. But I guess I just wanted to get to that, in order to have these capital, in order to have the money to be able to put, do capital projects, which are over one year, otherwise it'd be expense, and it would be revenue expense. But when we're talking about something that is over one year, we have to have a surplus coming in in order to be able to build a balance. Or you would just go and put debt, and not have the money to do it, and you'd have a liability, so.
Yeah, currently, we're under the recommended amount of reserves for the size of our system and our operating budget. And unfortunately, we forced you guys to be a little more, to actually put less into the reserves last year. I think all it took was these issues that came up now, to let us know why. Maybe we need a more healthy reserve balance. But yeah, you're right. We need to collect for those future issues. When you have a system that's of 20, 1920s to now, we're going to have these failures. We're at 26 lakes. There's correlation between those lakes and these issues that we come across. And so buckle up. We're going to be, we're going to need more in that reserve year over year than even we thought last year, right? So that's going to be baked into our rate discussion as well. Because again, I know as a staff, Olivia, Katie, and myself were, kind of said, hey, we can take a long road view on this revenue, on this reserves, because we hadn't had sinkholes, and $5 million holes and problems. Now we're having those things, right? And so we need to be prudent with our reserve levels, because that certainly is what keeps the system functional, so.
And, and I guess I would just also add, it is, pardon the pun, a drain. But, you know, we are being proactive with the SAW grant. We are cambering. I'd rather be proactive, spend the money upfront, than be dealing with residents, or my own, you know, house backing up, which is the worst of all worlds.
Backups, or even, like, Pine Tree Trail was a sinkhole, right? And so we have no control over what's around that sinkhole, right? So if it's near a residence, or if it's near XYZ, it will be swallowing that. In this case, it was a roadway that got swallowed, that we would have had to rip out anyway. But that's the real, you know, public safety, and, and strength of your system, and, and being able to provide the water when it's, I mean, it is a human, it's a, it's a public safety issue, if we can't provide water to people, and if we can't get the sewage out. So, you know, we take that seriously. That's why we have to have those reserves, you know, or a, a good portion of why. You know, we need to begin to think of it as an asset with depreciation, and with, you know, values for that system that's in the ground. And that's where a lot of that, although I couldn't answer the detailed questions that maybe Jason could on his thing, you know, that's how we have to support the system. And that money that's in a reserve is there for these type of things, certainly, so.
Thank you.
In one year, we had, like you said, Porter's Lane and Long Lake take out quite a bit of it.
Well, for years, we used to stand up here and kind of warn you guys, hey, the big one's coming, right? And now we don't have to do that anymore.
Two.
Because the big ones were here, right? And it's not a Macomb County swallowing 15 houses, but, you know, one or two houses for us.
Porter's Lane affected 70.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you don't want anything like that, right?
I mean, Porter's Lane, it seems, you know, even when we were talking to the people that get easements, like, well, it's not that big. Why do you have to shut everything down? Well, that could have affected 70 different ones that flowed that way.
Going into it, or, yeah.
Can you imagine if we didn't, thank goodness, like you said, look for the issues? If that would have failed, that would have put 70 people's basements under. So thankfully, you guys are doing a great job.
That's not an option, right? The failure of these systems is not an option. Again, we can't go out of business.
Right.
You know, so we have to perform in a way that we have the revenues there, no matter what scenario may come, come to pass, you know? Zero usage on water, right? I mean, that's clearly far-fetched. But, you know, that's, we are declining in our usage. And when you decline in usage, the cost per volume goes up, right? That's part of that simple division equation. We use less, you're going to pay more. So.
Yeah.
Because the costs are not going down. They're actually increasing, so.
Any other questions, statements? If not, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Well, stay tuned. Hopefully, you can meet a new engineering director when they're getting these projects off the ground, so.
Getting closer, I will tell you that. It's hard to, it's, there's some tough shoes to fill, but we're, we're getting there.
One quick question. I've heard a couple of different estimates on opening up of Long Lake. People are asking all the time, when will that open? I've heard mid-January, late January. Can you give us a real?
So I'm going to be conservative, because I don't like to write checks. I can't cash, right? So, but we were in the home stretch. So the sewer is done. The, so that's the whole reason we're there. The new sewer is on pilings. It's backfilled. It's flowing in place. They just connected, there's five homes out there under a boil water alert, because today, they connected the brand-new water main, that they had to move to make way for the sewer, right? And so here, and concrete is ordered for later this week. That's, becomes a wild card with the weather that we got. Cure time is two to three weeks. So I would say first week, second week of February, as a conservative, in case they can't get the concrete or something like that. But I would say, we should be open, you know, that, that's definitely one that I would sign my name to.
And that's a temporary open, or full-on, we're done?
Well, it'll be full-on, but it'll be temporary till spring. So it'll be, it'll be concrete on Long Lake Road.
You should be a politician.
Oh, there's going to be, we're going to get the road open, which is the main emphasis for everyone.
Road in the spring.
Right. But we'll put regular asphalt down on Pine Tree Trail in Groton in the spring. It'll be cold patch or gravel until not, you know, until then. And grass and everything. We can't obviously do that. So we'll be back in the spring to do that type of restoration. But we're going to get the road open. That's the emphasis. Well, hey, the emphasis was, get that sewer flowing, and get bypass pumping out of there. Secondarily, get everybody back on our main water main there. And that's occurring. They, they actually should be connected now, but they're on a boil water for two days. Then it's get the concrete in, which, and then it's like, okay, if it's 20 degrees, they need to go two and a half weeks. If it's 30 degrees, they can go a little shorter. It really depends on the temperature at that point, and what they have to do to get that concrete to cure, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem. And I probably, I do owe you an update in two weeks at the last, because I'll continue those from Olivia. So I, that'll be a good, and, you know, I will sign my name to that one, through a memo. So, so that I should have very much more clarity by the time we get to that point. So, so you'll see that, so.
Thank you.
Alright?
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is to approve payroll and vouchers for December 26.
Before we go to that, could I make one comment? I don't know, that should have been public comment. But today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And I just want to appreciate all of the law enforcement, but particularly, our incredible force that we have here in Bloomfield Township. So just, we can't recognize them enough. It's, you know, these appreciation days come around for a lot of things, but we appreciate them every day.
Thank you. Thanks for you to point that out. Of course, I'm sure everybody here agrees.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So next, we go to approve payroll and vouchers for December 26.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Shostak.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. And next is to approve payroll and vouchers for January 9.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Shostak. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That passes as well. Without Martin here, who's going to take on the adjournment motion?
I will. Motion to adjourn.
Motion by trustee Murray. Support by trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye. We're not going to waste any time on that one.
Thank you, everybody. I'll see you in two weeks.